I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Mawa Board of Education on January 30th at 7:01. Kyle, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Gallo, here. Mr. Kizmarski.
Here.
Ms. Conoco.
Hmm.
Dr. Morthee. Mr. Wendrickowitz. Ms. Ziccone.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
And Ms. Barron.
Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on January 30th, 2019, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Mr. Gallo, would you lead us in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to recess to executive session, please. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Wendrickowitz. We're gonna be about a half an hour?
I would say fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
And that's...
All righty. Okay. May I have a motion to reconvene to public action meeting? Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Mr. Gallo. Okay, agenda questions. Please leave me your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position within the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes, and please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. May I have a motion to open to the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Ziccone. We're open to the public at 7:30. Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close to the public, please. Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Mr. Kizmarski. Superintendent's report.
I do, yes. Good evening, everyone. Probably most of you at this point, your cellphone has rung. I did, we did call for a delayed opening tomorrow based on the dangerously low temperatures. Our parking lots experienced some freezing today. It's real difficult with the salt and the cold weather to loosen up those parking lots. I know there are areas, side roads as well, although the DPW really did a good job. There are some areas that were super cold, and Ms. Rizzo can attest to the fact that her car doors were frozen shut this morning. So with that in mind, we're hoping, although there won't be a huge temperature increase tomorrow morning, that there will be as safe of a travel as we can for our kids who are on the bus, who walk, and for our staff coming from near and far. With that said, I know that Mr. Bleeker has done a real great job as far as updating you all on the steam facility. However, Mr. Pascal is equally excited. He made an iMovie or a video that I would love the opportunity to show you. Cheryl, if you would be kind enough just to hit one of those lights on the side. Takes about a minute, but it brings you inside. You should leave the head off for a little longer. Just wanted to show you the inside of it. It doesn't look completely awesome yet, but we're making a lot of great process, progress, rather. We still anticipate substantial completion by the end of May, which is a really good thing. Getting that steel in place as quickly as we did has made a real big difference. There was a walkout today with Carlos and who else? Kyle?
Mr. Pascal, Mr. Jarvis.
In the spaces to look specifically where we're going to hang certain things now that we're looking at some walls to make sure we have the electrical outlets where we need them to be for our technology, all those things we can kind of change and alter at this point. So that has been super. Other than that, I'd like to just turn over a portion of my comments to Dr. Dittoro. One of the things that we had said back a couple of months ago in regard to the library circulation book schedule was that we wanted the opportunity to meet with our media specialists and our principals, and we wanted to do that in January. That did take place. Dr. Dittoro, we'll just bring you back and then bring you forward and let you know where we're at at this point. Mike?
(Inaudible) why we're here and where we... So last year, as I stated in the past, a number of educators throughout the district, including the media specialists, took a look at the technology standards. During that time, we started to identify where they fit in our curriculum across all subject areas. During those conversations, we felt as though it was important to create some sort of point person to ensure that those skills were taught consistently for all of our students. Those skills were identified and placed with the media specialists. Because it was an increase of material, we felt like we needed to adjust their circulation schedule. Fast forward to this year, in the beginning of the year, we met with the media specialists to take a look at that new addition to their curriculum and their skill sequence, and we identified places in the skill sequence to say, this new material fits best in these specific units. During that time, we asked them how they felt about the change in that circulation schedule. We took a look at the circulation data, and we asked them to continue to look at that program as the year went on. We told them we were going to set a date in January as a logical stopping point to see how the program has really evolved as the year has started to unfold. We felt like in the middle of the year, it's a really nice sampling size to see what is really taking place and how this is going to happen, their flow and their timing in their curriculum. That happened on January the 14th. We asked them again to take a look at circulation numbers. We asked them how, it was telling me there was mixed reviews. They identified some grade levels. They did feel that the increased information did slow them down, but they also identified grade levels that they said, you know, it's a little light here. I think we might be able to manage with that whole schedule. So we asked them, for the next couple days, we want you to think of three different things. We want you to think of, should we go back? Should we maintain? Or should we alter the existing adjusted schedule? We came back together on January the 23rd. In between that time, Ms. DeVito met with the media specialists and the admin team to talk them through what they were feeling along the lines of the pacing of the year, the new material, the circulation, all the things involved in the decision-making process. When Dr. Shown and I met with them on January 23rd, the media specialist, Ms. DeVito, and the administrative team came to us with a proposal and suggestions to alter the schedule. After Dr. Shown and I heard those suggestions, we agreed, and we feel as though that information is specific to what they're encountering in the classroom. We totally trust and feel as though they're the ones to make that decision and feel as though they're making a decision based on the information that they're receiving on a day-to-day basis. So what we did was, let me show you what that schedule's gonna look like. If you take a look at the top, the top is our current schedule. As you can see, K, 1, 2, and 3, it's every other week with a max of three books. And 4 and 5, it's every three weeks with a max of three books. The proposed schedule from the media specialist and the administrative team, they felt as though in kindergarten and first grade, the content that we embedded in the curriculum, the new content, did not impact that pacing as much as expected, so they feel as though it's important to go back to that every week with a max of three books. Starting in second grade to fifth grade, they felt like the content became more dense, and there was more to infuse in their curriculum, so they felt the best thing to do, if you noticed there is a change, they increased the amount of books that they're giving, but they felt like to stay at every other week at grade 2 and 3, increase it to four books. And in grade 4 and 5, instead of going every three weeks, they're gonna go to every other week and increase it from three to four books. So that was the recommendation that the media specialist and the administrative team gave to us with the rationale of what I just tried to share with you. Dr. Shown thought, Dr. Shown and I felt like it was a thorough process. They were thoughtful, with the understanding that we're gonna continue to assess as the year goes on, anything come back and chew, and now that we have a full year under our belt, all the material that was delivered throughout the year, and make a determination on a system appropriate for what we need to accomplish the best of all.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
That's it from you, right?
Good. Okay. Business administrator, Mr. Bleeker.
Uh, I guess just maybe one moment to... Bring me the... (Audio cut off). Okay, thank you. I have two items to speak to this evening. One is the vacancy that's currently on the Board of Education. Just to give the public of the Board an update on how we are proceeding to fill that vacancy. The date for residents to submit a letter of interest ended on Friday, January 25th. Six residents have submitted a letter of interest for the vacancy that's currently on the Board of Ed. Interviews will be conducted at our next Board of Ed meeting, scheduled for February 13th, 2019. The meeting's gonna begin a little bit earlier, it's gonna begin at 5:45 in the afternoon to allow for those interviews to be held prior to when the Board convenes to have its regular meeting. The interviews will be conducted in the public, and they will be the anticipation to select somebody that evening. The other item I wanted to speak about very briefly is Agenda Item 18A. That's the retirement of Ms. Patricia Gruber. Patty began with the district in September 1992 as a substitute secretary. She became a full-time employee in September 1994 and has held the position of payroll secretary in the business office since September 1997, over 21 years. Patty and her husband Larry were Mawa residents for many years, and her two grown children, Matthew and Kelly, graduated from Mawa High School. Words that come to mind when describing Patty are dedicated, reliable, detailed, and honest. Patty is known in the business office as having a spreadsheet for everything and is meticulous and organized with her work. We wish her well in her retirement. She'll be retiring at the end of June.
(Audio cut off).
Mr. Barron?
Yep. In the spirit of celebration for the school year, I just think it's really important to highlight our most recent PD Day. Our teachers presented a range of topics from technology to literacy to socio-emotional learning for our teachers, and it was teachers teaching teachers, and it was a really, really big day. So I want to thank our administrators, especially our teachers who participated, and Dr. Dittoro for overseeing the whole successful day. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I recall Dr. Dittoro saying that there were seventy sessions that you could sign up for, so to give you a sense, this is a massive undertaking. This is not like, oh, ten teachers went to a room and, you know, there's a lot of logistics, a lot of work behind the scenes.
And if you saw our Twitter feed, right?
And I saw the Twitter feed.
I'm sure you did. It was some really, some really great energy going on.
There were a lot of faculty members who really didn't want it to not happen, and when we were expecting weather that day, and Lisa and I were talking in the wee hours of the morning, right, trying to figure out what to do, there were faculty members that were saying, we spent time preparing, and we want to do this, and it doesn't get any better than that. So it was awesome.
Cool. Ms. Barron could not be here tonight, did not leave a president's report, so we'll go to board committee reports.
I have, I have two reports. For finance committee, we have met two times so far to begin the development of the 2019-20 operating budget for the district. We're sort of on a schedule to meet every two weeks, and we're starting to dig in. I'm also gonna make report for negotiations. We've had three meetings with the MEA to date. One was an informal, sort of just get to know each other in December, which was very effective because there's a whole new team on their side. And we've had two formal negotiations, meetings to date, and I would characterize the discussions as open and constructive with all the participate, participants voicing concerns and solutions. So it's been very productive to date.
Just a quick, just a quick update on an event we had here recently for the Access for All Committee. On the 12th of January, there were, I believe, about nine or 10 special needs kids and their families were invited to the basketball varsity game as VIPs. They were brought in the locker room, they were showing around, they were all given, you know, signed balls. Got to sit in the special section and watch the warmups and stuff. Won that game as well, but they all had a great time, and the families were appreciative, the kids had a great time. And special thanks to Coach Brannick and his varsity squad. They were fantastic, and obviously Roger and everyone for putting it together, so good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rick, I have...
Go ahead.
On behalf of instruction and curriculum, I just wanted to say that the review, we appreciate, and we were kept abreast by Dr. Dittoro and Dr. Shown as to what was going on with the proposed changes, and I think it was a nice collaboration, and the feedback from the media specialists were taken and, you know, really put into place. So I think we just wanted to say our support for the adjusted schedule. Regarding professional development, I think the one piece I wanted to also say that one of the things that Dr. Dittoro had spoken to and explained to the committee was, this was really teacher-driven and teacher-choice. Instead of our sort of structuring it for them, this was like, what are you interested in, and what do they? And I think when you do that and people get energized about what they're interested in versus us sort of maybe, you know, having a particular agenda, I think it's always more exciting, and I think that's the feedback. And so we appreciate, again, you know, that you guys are moving in that format as well. So thank you very much.
So for policy committee, we met tonight. We're working on the 2000 series, which is super exciting. These are the policies, the regulations are in the car, and there's probably just as much there. So we've, we're making progress there. That's part of our effort to go through and review every policy and every regulation. There are a bunch of them. This is, this has been a, we've been working on this for two years now, a year and a half, two years. It's a huge undertaking. It's a lot of mind-numbing reading, but it's definitely necessary. We're running into things that haven't been looked at since the late 90s, and a lot of them haven't changed, but you know what? We have to look at them and make sure that they're still relevant, and, you know, so it's a huge project, but we're, we're working on that. So we met earlier tonight. For Ms. Barron, she left me a report for the Mawa Schools Foundation Liaison, and they had a meeting on the 30th, and they have the Thunderbird Run coming up. Registration is currently open for the 19th Annual Mawa Thunderbird Run, scheduled to take place on Sunday, May 19th. Prices for registration are discounted until Friday, February 1st, so time is running out there, and there's a small bump for registration. Mawa Police Officer Tim LaTavish, who is an avid runner, has volunteered to lead the 5K training program. So please check with the MSF.
Sign me up.
(Laughter).
If you do it, then I'll do it.
Yeah, so will I.
Well, last year he ran in a Bluetooth, too, so let's not get crazy.
(Audio cut off).
So please check with the MSF website for further information. The MSF is grateful to the Mawa Education Association for their sponsorship of the Kids Run. In conjunction with the run, the Souls for Souls program is back this year. Please keep your eyes open for more information in early March to learn how to support this worthy cause. Their spring grant cycle opens up on February 13th, so it's always an exciting time at the Schools Foundation. They have a meet and greet scheduled on February 25th at Mawa Barn Grill. More information is available on their website. National Junior Honor Society Tricky Tray. The MSF is soliciting new and boxed items for the National Junior Honor Society Tricky Tray, which is scheduled to take place on June 7th. Be sure to mark your calendars for their Casino Night, which is taking place at Seasons on Thursday night, October 24th. And last but not least, the MSF is always looking for corporate sponsorships. If you own a company or know of a company that might be interested in supporting the MSF, please contact Mary Beth Duffy or check out their website, which is www.vmsf.org. Do we have any other board member remarks, comments on anything non-agenda related?
Yes. I would just like to thank Dr. Dittoro and the Mawa Municipal Alliance for their most recent program on cyberbullying. Peter and I attended it. We both thought it was interesting, and it was a pretty good turnout.
Eye-opening information. Eye-opening information.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank the staff, the administrative staff, for the work they did in pulling off a retirement reception for Scott Bannamore. They really were above and beyond. It was a huge success, and there were many people from the past that somebody showed up we hadn't seen in years. So that was very good. When we get to 18A, which is Pat Gruber's retirement acceptance, I'd like to break that out. As Kyle says, she was a special woman, and I think she deserves a special recognition. So we can break out 18A separately for the rest. I appreciate that. And on a sad note, January was a hard month for the family of Mawa Schools. We lost Madonna Dorsel, a longtime teacher in Mawa. Couple of my kids had her, I think you may have, did you have her? No? And that's Sue Dorsel's mom. And then Anthony Primus, for 26 years, he stood at the bottom of the hill and helped the kids across the path back and forth in all kinds of weather, and I think that will need to be recognized here at a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion on old business, number 16A and B, please? Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Mr. Kizmarski. Kyle?
Okay. Roll call. Mr. Gallo?
I have to take on 16A, and I vote yes on 16B.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes. May I have a motion on 17A through Y, please? Mr. Gallo, second by Dr. Morthee? Kyle?
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Before voting yes, I would just like to point out on 17Y, the computer leads for one-to-one at a high school. Very happy to be voting on this and pushing this forward, and we're getting there after all this time, so very exciting. So I vote yes.
Excellent. Thank you. (Audio cut off). Dr. Morthee?
Yes, and I would second the 18Y.
I'm particularly interested in 18X, 17X.
X, I'm sorry, 17.
Mr. Wendrickowitz? Ms. Ziccone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
I'm gonna go with Mike on 17X. This is the curtain wall in the library at the high school, which we know has been in need of repair for quite a while. The last time, so the windows on the, as you look at the building, the windows on the library, the last time this went out to bid, we didn't get any bids, which was really discouraging, and I'm glad to finally be voting on that because that's a long time coming. So yes.
Thank you.
At Mr. Wendrickowitz's request, we'll take 18A separately, please. Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Dr. Morthee?
Roll call for 18A. Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes, and thank you for her dedication to our district.
Mr. Wendrickowitz?
Should we be missed? Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Ziccone?
Yes.
And Mr. De Silva?
Yes. And I'll entertain a motion on 18B through Z, please? By Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Gallo.
Roll call for 18B to Z. Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone?
Yes.
And Mr. De Silva?
Yes. And I'd like to entertain a motion on 18AA, which is not on the agenda. This is an addendum that was just added. There are copies on the shelf in the back. Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Mr. Gallo.
Roll call for 18AA. Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone?
Yes.
And Mr. De Silva?
Yes. Public questions or comments. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes, and I'll entertain a motion to open to the public, please. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Gallo. And we are open to the public at 7:54.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Zigg. I live on Coventry Way in Mawa. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you so much for listening to the Library Professionals and Parents and Reinstituting Weekly and now Biweekly Book Checkout. I'm glad that the best practice has prevailed, and I look forward to working with district leadership to nurture a district-wide culture of reading. Also, as an aside, I went to the Anjack concert, concert conference on January 8th where Ms. DeVito was presenting, and one of my colleagues attended her workshop and said it was excellent, along with the principal, Betsy Ross, and somebody else, so I just wanted to let you know.
That was great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jen Park, Six Divine Drive. I also wanted to take the time to thank you so much for taking into consideration everything that we've been saying for the past five months. I think this is such a wonderful move forward. Thank you, Dr. Dittoro, for meeting with me, I don't know, three or four times, I suppose. And Ms. DeVito, of course, thank you to the board, to Superintendent Shown. I think this is a really positive move. I'm just going to suggest perhaps maybe in the future, we consider allowing the students to return their books before their two weeks is up. I'm just gonna throw that out there as something to consider. I know my son reads his books. He gets three, he'll read them in two days, and then it's like pulling teeth, trying to get him to read if we don't have time to get to the public library. So thank you. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Patricia Dubois. I live at 3509 Woodyard Court. I also want to say thank you for allowing the children to take more books out every two weeks. I think you looked into their developmental needs. K through 1 definitely needs to go more often, and the other ones need books. My kids are also in second grade, so they read their books right away, and we, you know, one of them is researching Germany, and now he's decided he wants to do lobsters. So, yeah.
They're connected. I don't know how, but they're...
Right. So I work in Warwick, New York, so I would be willing to, I know you can't change the schedule for next year, but we have a way that we approach allowing children to return their books in exchange throughout the school day, you know, in special times. So if you are interested for next year, I'd be glad to discuss that and let you know the alternatives, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David May, David May, 93 Owino Road, Mawa. I'm gonna stand here for the next 30 minutes to make this longer than...
(Audio cut off).
Says 15 minutes.
That's really good TikTok.
No, I just saw recently that another school district had cameras installed on their buses on the side to catch the people that speed past the stop sign. I was just wondering if that's something that the town could look into for the district.
I don't know if we've ever looked into it, but we certainly can.
Yeah, I think it's important.
You know, with the cost, we have cameras on a lot of our buses internally, not the external piece, and I know...
And it seems like that's an issue these days, people speeding past the...
There was some recent communication that came out as late as last night, because I'm sure you're aware of that just happening.
So, yeah, if that's something we could look into, I think it'd be important to stop those speeders.
He's got it, done. That was 30 minutes?
Thank you.
He's gonna hump the rest.
No, 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 no.
I could read you.
You are in the course of even events. Anyone else? Okay, may I have a motion to close to the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Kismarski, and we're closed at seven fifty-eight. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Dr. Morthee, second by Mr. Gallo, and we are adjourned. Thank you for coming out tonight.